I'd like to call the order. The June 3, 2025 meeting of the people's planning board. It is 6:45 PM. Just so everyone knows, tonight, our tech people are remote. So there will be nobody to remind us when to turn on and when to turn off our microphones. So we'll have to be very cognizant of that. So with that in mind, I'd like to introduce the people at the table. To my left, excuse me, is Dennis Quintel, who is our town engineer. Paul Bean is a planning board member. Bob Chisolo is a planning board member. I'm Lynn Merrill. I'm the chair of the planning board. To my right is Robin Carter, our land use administrator. Electra Eli Alessio, who was our select board representative. And Chris Patnott, who is another planning board member. In the empty chair between Chris and Glenn is soon to be Robin Dugay, the vice chair of the board. And last but not least, is Glenn Greenwood, our town planner. Welcome, everyone. We had four hearings scheduled for tonight. The first hearing, we need to open. It is 60 Mill Road slash Off Mill Road. It's MAP R 22 lots 25 and 25A, which is Off Mill Road. The zone is rural residential aquifer. The applicant has asked for a continuance of that hearing to our June 17 meeting. So, do we have a motion?
There's a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion to continue that hearing to June 17 at 6:45 PM here at the Town Hall. Are we have any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous. Okay. The second applicant tonight is CJ and Jay Leasing. It's Greg and Scott Dimitri of 83 Route 125. It's MAP R 10 lot 9. It's commercial free zone. The applicant has submitted a conditional use permit application proposing a modification to the original site plan that was approved by the planning board on September 17, 2024, to allow construction of a well access road. Do we have anyone here for that hearing? Just in time. So for those of you in the audience who may not know the protocol for our meetings, it's very easy. First, we have the applicant describe what it is they want to do. And then we have discussion and questions from the planning board to the applicant. We listen to the reports from the various town departments. Yeah, you need to move over here, actually physically move over to this side of the table. And the reason for that is because we have found that when you're over here, the audience can hear you much better.
You're okay.
So that's where we are. And then once we've had the planning board discussion and we've heard from the department heads, then we do open it for public comment. And anyone in the public can come forward. You need to introduce yourself, you need to tell us where you live. And then you may give your comment. Once everyone has given their comments, we close public comment and we go back to planning board discussion and any decision making. So, that said, we need your name and place of residence for the record, please.
Oh, sure. So I'm Cindy Terrio.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Terrio. I'm with Locust Empire, representative for the owners. This is Keith.
Keith Wentworth, Thunton Garfield, we're the general contractor.
And Greg Dimitri, the owner.
Okay. Should I take this with me? Yeah. All right. So you may, some of you may recall, I don't know if you were all on the board when you were here last. This project is under construction. We were here in November, December. We received approval in November and December of last year. Throughout the process, as we were getting the permits for the public water system, also the septic system, things shifted a little bit and our well moved. And we also needed to add a well access road to it. So that's why we're back for a conditional use permit. You may recall, this is Route 125. We have one entrance. The building is here. It has 10 bays, service base, and an office. The leaching area for the well is up in the corner of the parking lot here. There's setbacks from the well and the septic system. So they can't, they were, it was pretty tight to put them all in the process. The original location of the well was over here. But the DES wanted us to move it away from the cemetery because of nitrates. So in the process of doing that, we pushed it in closer here and it ended up being within the buffer zone of the vernal pool that's there. So we also need an access road. So the shortest way we found to the well is to come off the back of the property here and do a little turnaround towards the retaining wall and drill the well. And Robin, I don't know, questions or comments, I guess?
So, comments on the desk? On the site?
Well, not a, no, not a, I try not to go any more than I have to. They're doing a great job. The contractors are doing a great job down there, so I don't have to be there as much as some other contractors on other projects. So I reviewed the plan and these are my comments. I had spoken to Cindy a couple of times about this and we talked about a couple of different options. And so the focal area on this plan set is for the leaching system and the access to the proposed well. My understanding that the location of the proposed well cannot be moved because of setback constraints. Where the retaining wall is existing, I believe is designed for the proposed access road to the well will be the least impact to the wetland buffer zone. We looked at other options about coming to the easterly side of the retaining wall, but that would be a lot more disturbance to not only the, to get to the well location, but a lot more disturbance in that buffer zone. So I don't have any objection to the location of the leaching system as it's now shown because it originally was shown to be over the slope, over the edge of the paving onto the slope area. And my third comment was, as I recall from the public hearing for this project, the disturbed buffer zone to 85 and 125 is to be reestablished. I believe the slope should be revegetated with trees and fencing at the top of the slope just off the edge of the parking area. A fence at the bottom of the slope will not hide vehicles that will be parked on the pavement six feet above. This buffer area should not be used for snow storage. I surmise that eventually tree roots will impact the proposed subsurface water line, sewer line, and electric line shown. I would recommend that the electric and sewer lines not be located in the buffer zone. And I recommend that the water line be placed along the portion of the buffer that is not planted for the access way easement noted on sheet one of the existing conditions plan. Tree detail for this area should be provided. So that access way easement, it's my understanding that it's, I don't know if it's for vehicle traffic, but I think it's for pedestrian traffic. I'm not really quite sure about what that access easement was for down around that residential property. But I think that that's a traveled way that is not going to be planted with trees and vegetation, that would be the better location for a water line to be placed in so that roots from the trees that might be planted or growing on the slope would not impact that water line. So those are my comments at this time. Thank you.
Do you have one?
Thank you. So I have, this is an application for a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of an access road to the onsite drinking water well. This is the first public hearing for this application, so the planning board should consider motion to invoke jurisdiction. And from my perspective, the plan set is complete for such an action. Had the location for this access road been identified on the original site plan, we could have handled it during that review. Since this is happening after the original approval, we are treating it as a request for a conditional use permit found in section 202.8 in the zoning ordinance. And I have no concern with this request. I would just like, at some point, for the discussion to include how frequently this access road is used, because I think that should be a part of the decision making process.
We also have comments from the two of the department heads. The first one is on the town power grid requirement. And they're very concerned that the old driveway is not shown on the plans because it's not included. It should not be, not planned in the power grid, but the old driveway has not yet been moved.
Oh, okay.
So they would like to make certain that that is being moved.
Sure.
And the second one came from the chairman of the conservation commission. And she had some concerns about the road being over the buffer. Subsequently, it's back. We received another comment from her, from Brayson Hill, who is the sales champion regarding CJ and Jay Leasing. I did take a look and certainly through the road, the monitoring well that is inside the buffer. What is the meaning of the note next to the well? Well be located per TWS permanent private? Or why is it a requirement for well be located there? Is the monitoring well located in the wetland buffer because the permit specifically states that the well must be located within the buffer, question mark? Or does the permit require that the well be located outside of the construction area or particular activity for the operation? So they really didn't ask any more detail on what you're aware of this, where the well is.
Can I ask a question? Did you say monitoring well?
He did, he did say monitoring well.
Okay.
No, it's not a monitoring well.
Correct, because there are monitoring wells, but they're not, they're indifferent. Okay.
We all, he said monitoring well, but we all know that he meant drinking water.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, does the planning board have any questions? Can you respond to those that we have?
Sure. I would say that driveway is going to be removed. Yep, that was always the plan.
We will make sure.
Yep, we'll make sure that it is. Yeah, that's not a problem.
How often is it going to be used? You might be able to answer that better, but it's basically to install the well and maintain it.
Right.
So any service that's needed?
So typically, what I'm told permitted this is that generally, once every five years, somebody needs to go down and make sure that everything's working properly. If there's a problem with the well pump, then, you know, you'd go down with a pickup. You certainly wouldn't go down with a drill rig again. So we'll need to use it once to install and then just come back out. And it's generally for maintenance. So, yeah.
You have a question? Elliot, there's one more. I don't remember exactly. I had a question for the question. I believe the question was about the well.
I believe the question was about the well and was it within the buffer, but we didn't have any other information that would mitigate that other than what has been provided tonight. So they were just making sure that it wasn't in the wrong place. I guess that was their concern.
No, so I understand that. It actually, it's a drinking water well and it's a public water system. And so it has all, it has many setbacks, including one to the cemetery, which is what pushed us back into, into the buffer zone. So for drinking water wells, drinking water wells are allowed within the buffer zones according to the state. So it's, we, that's where it is. I don't know, I don't know how else to phrase it. Yeah.
Are there any other questions? See none? We'll open the public comment. Any further comments? Going one? Going two? Close the public comment. That's the plan. Kevin, would you all like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to invoke jurisdiction.
Do you have a second? Second. All those in favor? Do we have another motion?
I just have a question about the, Dennis's comment number three and what, I guess what folks think about Dennis's suggestion to move electric and sewer, right? Keep water, but move the other two to a different loc, is that something that's feasible?
Yeah, that's fine. It's not, that's fine. It won't add really to the, it's not in yet, so it's an easy, it's an easy shift. We can, we can certainly move the water line down to the bottom of the slope. And the sewer, we can, what we'll have to do is shift it around that catch basin and make a diagonal.
I'm not sure you have to do that.
Anyway, we can figure out where it goes. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Is there anything in, I don't have the reg rate in front of me. Is there anything in the regulation that we need to vote on before making the final motion? For the conditional?
With conditions? Yes, but before we do that?
Yeah.
Could we have some discussion about the other issue that Dennis mentioned about the buffering on that, in that area?
Oh, sure. I brought the landscaping plan that was approved previously. So what we have proposed right now is, this is the area that we're talking, thank you. This is the area here that we're talking about on the eastern slope and then presumably there. So what we have now is four trees and a row of bushes. We don't, I don't think we have a fence proposed right now at all. I think we had just landed with just the row of trees and bushes. These are, okay, the is flowering plum. And the bushes are, where are the bushes? I thought we talked about arborvitae. I don't see the, I don't see the label, but I think we talked about arborvitae because they grow tall. And so the reason for that is that we have the tall trees next to the trailers because the trailers are 13 high. And then the fence would, like Dennis said, even at the bottom, it wouldn't do much. Certainly the top of the hill, even an eight foot fence would be shorter than the, than the trailers. So I think that's why we haven't landed on the arborvitae and the tall trees, but, I don't know. There we go.
Any other questions?
No, but you feel that's inadequate?
As long as it's a fence at the top, if you can get a stable fence at the top, there is a fence. If we, in the last hearing, I believe the neighbors had asked for a fence, and if I remember correctly, if you go back, we had already agreed on that before, that we couldn't do a fence because it wouldn't make sense. They have an existing fence there. About where theirs is, it's on their property. Well, the point is, from my point of view, there's a four to six foot slope there or difference in grade from where the property line is and where the parking area is. So it's quite a difference in elevation. And some flowering fruit trees or whatever are pretty, but they don't last through the wintertime. Arborvitae, you'd have to make them fairly close together so that you could have enough of visual buffer. But if you're only proposing three or four provided trees, then I would think that that's probably not going to shield the trees.
Wow.
Okay, so those are the ones in between.
Good, right.
And how tall would those be when they're planted? I want to say they were six to eight foot and they get up to 20 feet. Well, that seems adequate.
Six to, if they are being installed at six to eight feet.
I believe so. At the top of the slope.
Yep, that's good.
And so being there, then that wouldn't be used for snow storage either, because we would be onto trees.
Yeah, we already agreed on that.
And so that seems like it would be an adequate visual buffer, but certainly a little too, but I think that's probably adequate.
I agree.
And I remember going back and forth about the fence versus the vegetative buffer, but, yeah, just a memory. It happened in front of me today, to site.
Well, being up on a part of a slope, that fences can blow over pretty easily too. So, you know, you have a wind factor there. So as long as the trees are planted and tied down so that they don't blow over themselves until they get well rooted. And that's why any trees like that would be impact any of the subsurface pipes that were being made. So, the plan is probably okay. What about the sloping on the northerly side of the driveway that goes down? Will there be any planting on that slope?
We have, we have.
In that buffer, that vegetative buffer.
So that we have, right, we can rotate those, if that makes sense. And then that's already forced and it's already included.
It would be, it would be, it would revegetate itself properly over a period of time. And with the public water supply, they can say there's not much traffic going down through there. And only periodic sampling of the water would be necessary.
That was why I wanted the discussion. I wanted it to be clear in the public record that we're not doing a roadway, even though that's what we're, that's what we're talking about essentially. It's a really different use of that, that access way.
It's an access road.
Exactly. And I wanted that to be clear in this discussion for the understanding.
One thing that also was important with that is that type of an area where it's degraded and whatnot, be a good place for turtle nesting as well on that area of the slope. So that's a good possibility for, for good reason, do something there and disturb that soil and then have it as an area for turtle nesting.
We love our turtles.
Signs all over the place.
Signs all over the place.
Does it make sense to include a note on the plan about the frequency of use for that access road? Is that something that we should be doing?
I think as long as it's, it was made part of the discussion, we're fine.
Okay.
What about that old driveway comment from Tom Owen?
I'm assuming you're planning to remove the driveway?
Yes. That's correct.
And we just checked the minutes of the September 17 meeting and it did say there were three options for the buffer zone and, I'm finding, they were open to planting the slope instead of a fence. And the decision about the 50 foot vegetation buffer should be included as a condition. And that was agreed. So the decision was made to do a 50 foot vegetative buffer. It's going to be half deciduous and half not deciduous and instead of fence. So that was a decision made at the prior of the hearing. Okay, people.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit requested in section 202.8 in the zoning ordinance for CJ Leasing at 83 New Hampshire Route 125 with the condition that addresses Dennis's note number three, that the sewer and electric lines will be relocated so that they won't be impacted by any rooting of trees. And that the water line be moved as well.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Robin Dugay, second by Rob to So. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, if you have any. Thank you so much. So the third application tonight is from David and Karen Flanders of 18 Church Street, MAP R 30 lot 1. The zone is HD 1 Aquifer. Lot size is five acres. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit and a conditional use permit for the extension of the existing driveway. Welcome to Kingston. So, what is it you would like to do? Give us the details and we'll move forward from there. We do have plans in place.
Great, thank you. My name's Dave Flanders and this is my wife Karen. After about 30 years away, I'm back. I grew up here in town and we're really excited to be back. We purchased 18 Church Street, so just down the road. And our application is to build an EDU on the backside of the property, about 1,000 feet back behind the existing house. And there is a conditional use permit as well for the driveway because we'll need to extend.
Do you need to apply something? Okay. Good, thank you. Just a, do you have anything to add?
Oh, okay. I thought I could do myself.
It's best we have it on the table close to you. Right here, close to you.
Keep it away from it. And again, the conditional use permit is for the driveway, for the extension of the driveway. So we're going to utilize the existing driveway in the beginning to go out to the back. We've been through many meetings with the planning department for advice throughout the whole process over the last number of months. And we've already met the state requirements for the natural habitat. So there were turtles that were seen there years ago, and so we met with Fish and Game and we've been fully approved for that. Our state shoreline protection is in, that is actually due by Friday. So our survey guy, who we were working with, Joe Nichols, said that's actually good news. Normally, they get back to you quickly if there is any issues. And they get 30 days and they're at like 26 days right now. So by Friday, we should have something back from them for that full approval. We've already been approved by the town for the sewage system. So we have the test pit dug and everything all tied in with that. We've got that full approval there. And then I submitted all the paperwork a couple of weeks ago with the town for everything having to do with the EDU conditional use as well as the driveway conditional use. And I, that's pretty much it.
So first of all, basically, you responded to this because with a detached EDU, we require planning board approval.
Yep.
And specifically to ensure that the looking field of the building is as an accessory building on a property. And in our zoning documents, it says such as a bar or a shed. And in our zoning documents, it says such as a barn or a shed or something like that.
Sure.
So, thank you. And.
Oh, I did want to add, we already met with the historical board too as well, and so we were unanimously approved by them two weeks ago.
Okay. So we have some comments? Dennis, did you have any?
I didn't send, I didn't send any comments, but I looked at it briefly, and one of my concerns was the setback requirement for the wetlands, whether it met the requirements. And on the previous lot line adjustment, I did have a copy of the wetland delineation report, upper with evaluation from Patrick Seacamp, and that verified that the required setback would need to be 75 feet because of the number of points based on the different categories. So that all they did need was a 75-foot setback, and that's what they have for the, for the building and area.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I have, this is the first public hearing for this request to construct an EDU on property of Greenwood Pond. The planning board should consider a motion to invoke jurisdiction. Plan is complete. The following are my comments upon reviewing the plan titled 18 Church Street, tax map R30 lot one, Kingston, New Hampshire, prepared by Nichols Environmental LLC and dated 4/26/25. Comment number one, the applicant has put in considerable work establishing the appropriate site for this EDU. This information is detailed on the site plan as provided. The EDU living quarters are sized appropriately to conform with our ordinance. From my perspective, the proposed structure does not comply with the town's requirement that the EDU look accessory to the primary residence. The addition of a four-bay garage to the EDU results in the overall size of the structure exceeding the size of the primary dwelling. Result of the proposed design is that it appears there are two homes on the property, and this is something the board needs to address. There is a town-approved septic system that has been designed exclusively for the EDU. This design has not yet been granted NHDES approval, but that is, that is only the case because of the shoreline permit that was necessary, and they are, I spoke with folks on Thursday of last week, they are very close to getting that. So when they get that permit, they'll be able to finalize the state septic approval as well. The driveway requires permitting as outlined in section 202.6 of the Wetlands Conservation District because a small area crosses a wetland buffer, so the board should consider that seat, that conditional use permit as well. And I have no concerns with that. They have, the driveway is in its best location, and our wetlands ordinance allows that accessways can cross through the buffer with a conditional use permit. So just to tie down that. And the board needs to consider a final decision regarding the granting of a CUP as outlined in section 206.6 of the EDU ordinance. So my, the biggest hurdle I see is the way the planning board goes about determining the size of this EDU. So I'm not going to say anything more about that. I'm going to let you guys talk about that.
Well, when the EDU detached, zoning was developed. We were one of the first communities to actually allow the detaches. And the big comments that we got from the public was the fact it looked like it was one property. It had to look like a house, most of them that had been done are houses that look like a barn or a poolhouse or, you know, something like that. And we have, this particular structure doesn't perhaps meet that. There might be ways that we could give advice on how to make that happen. I mean, one way might be to detach the garage, so that the garage is detached, and therefore the house perhaps could change a little architectural style or something to make that look more and detach the garage. But at this point, there's also the concern that the house would eventually, could, with your future owners, expand into the garage, which would no longer meet the requirements. So no detachment of garage by 20 or 30 feet or something like that might be an alternate, the other alternative might be tearing down the house in the front and putting an accessory building there and consider this the primary building. So there's, there's some things that you might do that might help make the ordinance work. We have to determine whether or not it does indeed work now or if something else has to be done. So, and we also have to consider that this is the first case that has come before us with this complication. And because of that, are we setting precedent for every other property in the community? So those are things that we have to consider as we look at this situation.
What's the total square footage of? 3,500 as it's shown on the plan? 2500?
For which? The, the EDU or the whole thing with the garage?
Microphone. On microphone, Rob.
This is 1,050, this is 1,500, so 2,500 square feet.
Right. But now, the garage isn't part of the calculation. If we include the garage of the existing, then it's much bigger, right? The existing house with the garage is definitely bigger than this EDU with garage.
Well, our ordinance clearly states that it's GLA to GLA, gross living area to gross living area, and garages are not considered gross living area.
Correct, right, which means we've met that.
So what we're looking at is the aesthetics more than the square footage.
Yeah. And the reason, again, it's a five-acre property, so it's not one of the smaller, we have tractors, we have, you know, things we need to upkeep the property, and that's why we needed the extra space for that, for that dwelling. And that's, that's the reason why, you know, we had considered like a two-story, something in, you know, we didn't do that for the reason of, we didn't want it to look grandiose, right? We want it to be single floor, single story, and that's why we came up with the architecture and the bills that we did.
Comments with the board?
I'm assuming that this, I have the microphone on, but I'm assuming this is the front of the house, so you're looking at the lake, you are looking at the lake from all those windows.
Correct.
It does not look like the colonial house.
No, we, we were approved by the, we were approved by the historical board fully, we had conversations through all of that.
Everything, windows, the worst.
And they, they weren't as concerned either, because even if you were to cut every tree down, you would never see it from Church Street.
It's not just a matter of seeing it from Church Street, that's not, that's not the issue. That garage, four-car garage is huge. It's huge.
But that's not included in the EDU space.
Yeah, I mean, I've been working with.
No, it's not. It's not, you're right.
Yeah, I've been working with the planning board for months, and, I mean, I've shown these plans multiple times, and this was the first concern I've heard of this. We've spent a lot of, like thousands and thousands of dollars to get to this point based on the feedback that we've gotten. And again, this is the first concern we've ever heard of this.
Yeah, I think our biggest concern is, we are going to set a precedent with this. And when you look out onto the plains, every house on the plains will be waiting in line to do just this in their backyard. And not to mention, I mean, every lot, if you want an EDU, you have 2,500 square feet going in. And again, I know gross living area, but the way it's set up, it's huge.
I also think we're the only property that's anywhere near that size on the plains, right?
Well, think of one thing, if the garage is detached, you can have a detached garage anywhere on your property and not have it considered part of it.
Understood, yeah. This was, this was about like, this, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, this is about, you know, convenience, right? So we, you know, have that attached so that we can get to it from the house and.
Looking at agent employees, yes.
And get to, you know what I mean? Like when it's four feet of snow out, you know, to go out and get to the plow and whatnot, because it's going to be a long driveway and whatnot. So it's convenience to be able to get to that to do those. And again, it's a five-acre property, so we have a tractor, there's a lot of, you know, clearing, like stuff that's falling down has to be done. So we have the tools, and that's why we needed the extra space.
Well, were you with the HSC?
Yeah, no, they were, they were concerned on view for the lake and materials, but like he mentioned, it's so far back that as far as the store was, they're okay with a little bit.
Yeah. But it does set a precedent.
It does.
You have to be mindful of.
Right. Can I make a comment? So looking at the plans submitted for the house, the east elevation, which is the one on the bottom right, would be, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be the side that would be facing Church Street.
Correct. That's correct. That's what you see driving in, yeah.
So if you did, like you said, clear cut on any of it, that's the side you would see from Church Street. So you wouldn't see the lake front section.
And that was a comment by the historical board too as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we met, you know, we met with them as well, and we, you know, went to make sure it looked like a barn, right? We wanted to make sure the doors were barn looking and the windows, we actually went with the colonial windows that they suggested. So that's, you know, all of the plans were all based on consultations that we've had with the planning board and historical board.
And I'm just talking about the size and how it's set up.
I mean, aesthetically, it looks nice, but do we want a 1,200 square foot house with a large garage, again, on any property in the historic district?
Not just historic, I mean, that, every, every lot that in town that, I mean, maybe use a new thing, yeah. I think we got to use a little caution walking into that, because this just says, hi, put in 2,500 square feet. How big is the others?
The living square footage is about like 23 years and change, I think it was. So the, the square footage of the EDU is 1,050 feet, and that's less, that's less than half of, for compliance.
Right. And the whole idea was it wasn't supposed to look at all like two houses on a property. That was the one thing that people were concerned about. So the objectives were, under 206.2D, to retain the appearance of a single-family property, whether the accessory dwelling unit is contained within, connected to, or detached from the primary residential unit. And then, again, on 206 dot four, the ADU shall be designed so the appearance of the property remains that of a single-family use. When the dwelling unit is not in a detached structure and those kinds of things, when the ADU is contained in a detached structure newer existing, it shall have the appearance of an accessory use, for example, a garage or a barn, thereby maintaining the appearance of a single-family property. In no case shall it look like a second dwelling unit. So that's the part of the ordinance that we need to consider.
I know.
Well, there isn't anything that can be done about that. There is no question that the size of the EDU being proposed conforms with our regulation.
Absolutely.
No question at all. One can question whether there was any attempt to make it look like an accessory structure or not, because it simply looks like a standalone dwelling from every elevation. That's a, it's not, that isn't an area that the board has had a lot of experience dealing with, with the EDU ordinance. But we have, in some instances, made folks put on fake barn doors on the, on the visible side of EDUs to make it look like a barn instead of a home. It's a, it's a very thin, tight rope we're walking here. But the, the ordinance, that language is very specific, even if Robin thinks it's poorly worded.
I just think it's vague. It's subjective, right?
It's, it is subjective, because it's saying, it's saying what you're, what you're approving can't look like a second home. But if you were a crow flying over this, that house is not very much smaller than the much larger looking colonial that is the existing structure. And that's trouble.
Hello?
I'd like to remind my colleagues that we have a property on Main Street right by the State Park, and the second house was put in the back. It was supposed to take down the front house, the front, the front was a porch wrapped around with the exercise equipment store, but that's been an eyesore on the plains forever. And that's two houses on one lot, and it's not supposed to be two homes. This is what this was, like beautiful design. I mean, I'd love to have a house that looked out at the water like that, almost like, it's beautiful. The four-car garage really concerns me, and I know Glenn said it's not legal, but that's fine, but I look at the property of Calvert Room, Inkston or Off-Rock Rimin, and they have one monster garage barn out there that I don't know how we're going to go to, to be very honest with you. And it's huge, it's huge. And it detracts from the other homes in the area. Again, if nothing's illegal, I can't, you know, say anything. But the other thing that we have, we still have, we're not, select one did not bring up the paperwork last night, but they were very concerned about the fact that the drones are not under survey.
I can address that, I can address that. That's because this, this was, I have the initial survey, if you want it, and it's the actual survey. It's because the, the survey was done by Henry Boyd and by Patrick Seacamp. So Henry Boyd is with Millennial, and Patrick Seacamp is with the Wetlands, and that was an actual survey. They gave Joe Nichols, who did all of our surveying for the septic and everything and what you are seeing, they gave him the exact electrical copies, and he made his off of this. He has to say by policy, this is not a survey, because he didn't do the survey, but the survey was done right here, and it was stamped April 21st, 2025, so just over a month ago, because there was a land swap done for this project.
I mean, with the land swap, but there's also the issue with land on the other side of the property.
That, that has nothing to do with this. That's a separate, that's not this property. It's a separate property. Yep.
But my colleagues on the board are going to ask me, how do we go forward with my survey?
The survey's right here. I have it.
I know, you have it right there. It's not untouchable. It's a, it's a, I'll tell them you have it.
The town does too. I mean, I know Glenn, you have it, everyone here has the copy, and it's exactly tied to what you're looking at. The town does too. I mean, I know Glenn, you have it. Everyone here has the copy and it, it's exactly tied to what you're looking at. That's just the logistics thing with the surveyors because Joe isn't, uh, excuse me? Joe Nichols. Yep.
It's different from Paul.
Okay.
You're welcome.
How? So even if the, the four car garage was separated from the ADU, I guess I don't know that that gets us a better result in terms of buildings on the property and then you're trying to figure out what's the primary residence, what's the garage, what's the secondary garage.
It, it looks, it's a beautiful design for that front on the lake. There's no question, but it looks like two houses on one property. That, for me, that's the issue.
Are there regulations as far as how big your garage can be?
There's not. No, no.
It's not about.
So it's always worth compliance with the ADU size.
Well, except it also specifies it can't look like a second dwelling.
I don't know how you, yeah, we did, we, we took all of that into full consideration. I mean, Glenn can tell you, I've been in his office. I was, he probably was sick of me.
No, I never got sick of you.
No, but I was in there multiple times and I had these plans. I, they, these haven't changed for months and I had these exact plans and that's why I never heard any negativity about it. Had I, I would have.
But it hadn't come here. I mean, it, I mean, it, we are elected by the community to, we really think to make sure.
I totally understand. But I was just going on.
I love what you've done. Don't get me wrong, but I, I'm really concerned about two houses on one property. That's what I'm.
I, I just, I'm not sure how any detached ADU could ever not look like two places now.
We can give you a list of those until you've been done and don't worry.
Again, I've probably spent $12,000 to get to this point and we have to change that. I'm gonna have to spend that all over again. Uh, and I, but I, and I, that's why I did my due diligence for months with everyone along the way to get to where we are. There was, I'm not trying to skirt any rules, right? I, I'm just trying to, to live. We want to retire here. This is where we want to end.
I don't mean to imply that you are. It, it just, it's a beautiful looking piece of property, but to me, it's gonna look like two places. And just because I can't see it initially doesn't mean down the road there isn't going to be a problem. And what I'm concerned about is the problem we have on the plains by the state park. That, that's been there forever.
Higgins. I, I remember. I was a kid when that happened. I mean, I was literally in high school. I went to high school with Jen Higgins. I remember, it was our joke, "When, when is your house gonna be done?" Right? It's still not done. But again, you can see that. You would never see this. You can't see it.
It doesn't make it right if you can't.
I understand.
So the problem is, anything we decide now can be held up in court later. So we have to be really careful about what we decide.
Sure.
And the one line that is, that is, the one thing that people were so concerned about when we did the detached ADU and that's where it was included, is it shall have the appearance of an accessory use, for example, a garage or a barn, thereby maintaining the appearance of a single family property. In no case shall it look like a second dwelling unit.
Right.
In no case shall it look like a second dwelling unit. So that happens to be where we're at and it could be a precedent. It could be used everywhere in town. So we have to be really careful because if we decide this, then we're really deciding it in other circumstances everywhere. We have to decide if that's what we want to do, one way or another. And, and conforming to this, does that mean it might have to go to ZBI?
That's an avenue. The, the issue that I would think they would, the way they would respond to us if we sent this precedee relief on that issue is describe to them how they get over the concept of hardship.
Yeah.
When there, when there is the allowance for the ADU. And so we're saying, the, the issue would be, what are we sending them there for? And is it the non-gross living area that we're concerned with? The four car garage that creates the appearance of a home as big as the existing primary dwelling unit? It's, it's a very difficult argument.
Father?
I just have one comment. I agree. You guys have put a lot of work into this.
A ton.
The only question I have, and I'm asking you Glenn, have you seen these sketches until the application came? I have not.
I can't say that I haven't. I can say that wasn't my concern. My concern was the location of the structure with all of our.
Okay, so it might have been.
I have. I've brought those in. I've brought those in multiple times. Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I haven't seen them until the application and I just wanted to make sure we weren't, so it has.
Yeah, I brought those in multiple times and we very purposely made this look like a barn, like based upon the feedback, right? That's why we did the barn doors and we did the windows and we, and we did it to make it look like that. It was.
Does it look like a barn to anyone?
No.
No.
If it looked like a barn, I think that there would be a, there would be a different, this doesn't look like a barn to me. It just looks like a very contemporary, um, home with an inordinate amount of, of garage space.
Right, but that's not part of the ADU.
Looked like a traditional barn, um, I think the argument would be different because it simply doesn't.
What would make it look like a barn?
I guess the typical sliding barn doors.
Which we have.
Which, that's, it looks like that. Yeah, yeah, we, that's exactly what we did.
Going in through the garage openings?
That's not.
You can't see it in the sketches?
It doesn't, it's not that you can't see it. It's that it doesn't look like that at all. So.
It's a sketch.
So if, if that is the answer, that those, that garage part of the building looks more like a barn, I think that that's helpful. It's still an issue for how the board approves the fact that, that what we will be approving is almost the same square footage as the primary structure.
Well, let's see if there's any public comment. Would you like to open for public comment? Do we have anyone that would like to comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, there's no public comment. This gentleman has been.
It is appropriate for their hearing. It needs to be.
Yeah, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone.
If you have something south, it's gonna have to be public. Yep. Whatever, all conversations have to be public. So yes, you can show the picture if you want, but it has to, it kind of has to be public.
It's my first time with this podium.
I know. It's tough. We're sorry.
He was just showing an example of another.
I mean, this is, this is unfortunately how the process happens. Until, until the board convenes, no real decision can be given to you about anything that you've submitted. And this is the overriding question. And it goes to the heart of how we look at detached ADUs in town.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, we just went by the square footage, right? That was, that was the hard fast thing that, that there's no, there's no, um, room for, for looking at it, right? It's like, this is the square footage, it's 50% and that's what we did and we met with that.
It complies with the ordinance.
Right.
So everything you've taught us complies.
Yeah.
The only thing that we're struggling with is the fact that it looks like two houses on one lot. And that's, that's the issue. That is the issue.
And that, it doesn't look like a barn.
On a sketch.
I've been listening intently and I think this is a very good discussion.
You're a good man.
But, um, I recall when the discussion happened about creating detached ADUs and from years ago, most houses were built with an attached barn or if there was a detached barn, it was close, very close to the same house. And thinking about that is I think that that's what the, to me, what the intent of the regulation is, is that if you can see it as two dwellings on the lot, that seems to make the regulations, that's what the regulations were written for. To me, if this lot was 100 acres and the same structures were being built, but it was so far out in the woods that you couldn't see it, you'd be having the same discussion, okay? And that's where the vagueness of your regulation comes into play. Now I look at it from a couple of other options here that one of the things you could do is look for a variance of frontage and subdivide the lot, but that might be a struggle and create a precedent as well. Uh, then you would have separate dwelling, separate lots for each dwelling. As far as the aesthetics, if the end of, and I'm looking at the east elevation of the, into the building, if that end of the building was more of a gambrel style part of the, the, the building that you could see as you're coming down the driveway instead of, it looks like a house, but it looked like a gambrel style with some features that would make it look like a barn. And I'm not just saying put in, you know, a split rail fence in front of it or something like that, but some other features that make it look like a barn as you're driving into it. The side that faces the lake, which that's where people are gonna see it from. But if they only see that structure and they can't see the one that's near Church Street, it would look like only one dwelling on the lot. So I'm thinking of these things too and, and listening to your discussion and it's a struggle when you have the regulations that aren't quite, aren't quite clear enough to, to address situations like this. So.
I think when this was written, we never, never anticipated such a thing.
Again, it's always like that. How many times have you changed your rules in the past because of different situations that come about? And I think it was anticipated and I think that's was the intent, not to let it.
Was, I don't even know if this is possible, but is there any consideration to expanding the existing garage to make that garage larger and not have it attached to the ADU?
I mean, it's not 50 feet away from us.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is that it, the well is there now, right? So I mean, if you look on historical pictures, there were chicken coops that went forever. Like where the garage is currently now, there were chicken coops. You know, it went out. It's in the kinks in the historical book. It's kind of neat. But they built the well. They put a well in right next to where the garage is now. So that's where the well is.
And your intent is to occupy the ADU?
Correct. Yeah, our son is, we're going to, I'll be living in the front.
Okay.
Which is perfect.
Absolutely. Like I said, I, I grew up here in town. I, I mean, I remember you when I was a little kid in La Cellecchio. Um, and I, I mean, we're excited to be back and this has been, this has been the reason that we came back, right? We're, to be able to do this. We want to retire here. This is what we wanted to retire in and hopefully have our family here. So. And that's why I put so much work into this, right? All of us, my wife and I and all of the people involved. We've put a lot into getting to where we are. Um, and, and we're just hoping to be able to keep moving with that.
And the one story house with an attached garage is certainly the, the perfect thing for aging place.
Correct. That's exactly. Yeah, one day I won't want to do stairs so much.
Talking so much. Losing track.
You're not. You're ass.
Oh, you buddy. It's a tough one. What do you want to do?
I just don't want to settle. And, you know, what could be built there? I mean, like you mentioned, a barn. I mean, that was the intent. I mean, the intent was not to have two houses on one lot. And my opinion is that unfortunately this does do that.
So, well, the intent was to allow two houses on one lot, but not to look like two houses on one lot.
Which I believe other people in town have accomplished, correct? Like there are folks who've built giant barns with an ADU that's.
So do we put a four car barn?
Well, that's, I.
Well, and that's the thing too, is we're, we're, like you were talking about, we're, want to retire here and stairs and you're guaranteeing we have stairs, right? If we have a barn and then something above it?
No, no, no.
No, 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 not necessarily because if you made the garage, it would look like a barn.
So what's the criteria for that?
Yeah, I don't.
What, I mean, we've already, we've gone through, um, the doors, the windows, um, the exterior siding to make it resemble historical.
Colors, red.
All of that, but if you can guide us in, you know, what do you determine as a barn?
Is, is, we don't have all, we want to have a particular model. This is just a car type portion.
Okay, so let's change the conversation a little bit. What if it was a one car garage? Would it be the same conversation?
No. No, I mean, then you've got a garage that's half the size of the existing garage and a primary dwelling that's half the size of the existing dwelling, less than half the size of the existing dwelling.
Right, but none of that is spelled out in the regulations, right?
Not for ADUs.
There's, the regulation has very specific.
Right. I understand that, but so this is really just that one line about the appearance of scale.
Right, right.
So I, I don't think we'd be having the same struggle if it was a one car, I certainly wouldn't, if it were a one car garage.
We could make a motion to approve it and either approve it or not. And there have an option to go to the zoning board for an appeal of our decision. That's one way to go.
Or we could modify council.
That's the second option.
And that might be the best way to go.
I don't think you could.
Because the, the key is, you're correct, is it looks like two houses. That is, that's what it is to me.
That, that's the, the line in our zoning ordinance, it's the structure.
And that's clear. It, that's not equivocal. It's wishy washy and cave because it doesn't give you specific dimensions. It doesn't help you in determining where you're gonna go from here. It does not. But to me, it looks like two houses. And I'm, I'm sorry to do that because I, I mean, I remember your family nicely, very positively. Your parents in particular and, but I, I just, I'm stuck on the two places on Main Street and I see this opening the door to, there's several, a lot of beautiful homes on Main Street. There's plenty of land in back. And so I think this opens up those other properties to put a second dwelling in the back of their houses like the one that looks like an eyesore by the state park.
Right.
And this does not look like an eyesore. Looks like something I'd like to move into without the four car garage.
Yeah, and the, I mean, the other, the other, the other, again, we're not trying to be gluttons or anything here. It's just what we.
I, I understand. That's not the point.
And, and the other thing again is how it's, it's so far back, you would never see it. The only person would see it would be the random kayaker that is kayaking by, right? Otherwise, no one will ever see this.
You may not have lived in town for a while.
It's honestly not who's gonna see it. Again, I'd love it. I would love to have one in my backyard. But I know that I could not put one in my backyard because I would run into the same problem we have here.
If you live on Main Street and you've got a big backyard.
Right, and I have five acres and it just, to me, is exactly what they did, did not want. How do you make it? In the regulations is, well, give me a white barn, put a fascia on the front to look out and three car garage in the back end.
I mean, there's, this is like a referee in basketball, is it a foul or is it not a foul, right?
I'm sitting here wondering which way we go with this, because I know, again, I live on Main Street, I got five acres, you can do this that I can do, and...
As long as you're wetlands and you, the turtles, you've got to watch out for the turtles. We've gone, yeah, if there's any turtles around, we've gone through all of those too.
He tells that it's pretty small, he's a big dog for that, you know what I mean, but he's single house, I mean, he's got eight acres, he's got twelve, I mean, I got five cars, he's got thirty.
It's almost like the regs need to say, like, your total, not, not living area, but your total square footage needs to be this, which it doesn't spell out, so that's why we feel we are well within the regulations of what is on paper right now.
I think we're all on the same page. We're all on the same page, we're held up by the one sentence.
Which, which is there for a reason. You know, if you, if you came in here with a white barn, you know, and you're facing Main Street, even though you can't see it, and there were barn doors, and then you did whatever you wanted with the other end, I think I would be okay with that, because that is definitely a law, without a doubt.
I, so I'm not an architect, I'm just looking at pictures online, but I think there might be...
You were going to say you just played one on TV.
If there's a way to carve out the center of the garage to look like that's the barn, and then there's a smaller ADU off to one side and a smaller garage off to the other side, so that it, the first thing you see is, hey, this is a barn, off to the left there's something, off to the right there's something, that I think would change the aesthetic.
The problem is, is that our, and we went through a land swap to make this happen, because of the wetlands, the way the wetlands all work, this is the way it had to be.
No, I'm just saying, change the roof line. You can literally, like, change the middle of the, so that this becomes the primary focal point. It looks like a barn, you've got the ADU off to the left and an AD, a smaller garage off to the right, that's not the same height.
So, you know who accomplished this? Accomplished exactly what you're looking for?
I, I, I wouldn't need to be drawn, I don't understand.
Yes, that's the house that does this.
Yeah, I know, but I don't understand what it looked like.
So, there's a house on Danville Road.
It's on the corner of Danville and Ball Road, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not exactly the corner, it's the next one over. He did that, he built a barn, because he wanted a barn, and he wanted a lot of cars, I think it's probably got at least four cars, and then on the lower level, I mean, the main floor to one side is an ADU on the back, and it actually does that, it actually...
I would love to see what your drawing would look like, because like I said, that's...
Well, I'm not, like I said, I'm not an architect or a very good drawer, but I can show you a picture.
Our footprint is, and we went through a land swap to make this happen, right?
We're not going to change it.
Yep, changes the footprint.
Talking about the aesthetics of the four-car garage.
So, can I show?
Yes.
Bashaw's is a good example.
Obviously, this is a lot... But if this becomes the primary focal point, right, so you have the larger raised roof there, ADU to the left and a one-car garage to the right, or smaller one with ADU to the left, two big ones in the middle.
Twelve.
Right, so you have one on either side, one smaller one over on the left-hand side or the, I mean, or the right, I don't know.
Well, right, well, but I don't know if the footprint's going to work then, because of the way the wetlands is.
So, you just turn the position of the roof, right?
I mean, I would have to...
You'd have to talk to an architect, because I know...
I, I, oh, we haven't, I've already...
I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to make that one.
To move on, because we have a couple, some more hearings tonight and more discussion, so I think we have to do one of two things, either refer to council. I suggest you drive by that particular house on Danville Road, because it does look exactly like a barn, looks exactly like an accessory dining room.
I just understand how independent the project is.
Well, of course, because you can't wear a...
If you look at your floor plan, okay? All right, I want you just to take your floor plan back, okay? You take that, and you drive back to Bashaw's house, and you look what he's got next to his house, that would fit.
So, what would you have us do here?
Drive by his house and you'll see.
But you're saying that it's...
Then what's different than that? When you go drive by, then you'll understand, one, it's two stories tall, two, it's a big giant barn.
But that's going to make it more grandiose, which goes against, we didn't do this for that reason.
No, no, I don't, I mean, my opinion is this does not. If you show me that house, that barn, it fits with the house. I mean, even if you took the, the existing garage you have there, the way that is, okay? Turn it this way, add as much footage as you want to your garage, keep it down to a thousand square feet, you know what I mean, imagine that exact barn you have, the little barn you have there, and if that's what I'm looking at from here, I'm okay with it, because it would match the house.
So, where would the garage?
So, I feel like you don't like the idea of the flat garage roof.
No, I think, I think everyone's just concerned that, that is the second.
This here. So, we add a peak?
Yeah.
And it looks like a barn?
Yeah.
And we're good to go?
Drive by the other house and see.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get a better plan in what the...
Yeah, no, no, I just, this, this is going to cost me probably five thousand dollars, and I apologize, and I've already put five thousand into this to make this...
Are you sure you're putting a plan in?
Yeah. So, if you took your garage, the way it's set up, it's a beautiful garage, okay? And you give me that front, turn it that way, face the other end towards the lake to do what you want to do with it, and I got barn doors on the front, it's white, it matches the house, it looks like one big property.
So, where are the barn doors in on this? Okay, so, but...
There, that's the face of the road.
But that's only two, like, we can only get two doors there.
You go by that other one, you'll have one this way. I guess garage doesn't matter, size doesn't matter, it just matters gross living area, what you live in, okay?
So, we need to move on.
Okay. But take a ride by Bashaw's.
What is the address, do we know what the address is? It's like near my mom's house.
Yeah, you go past your mom's house, and then where it goes on to, to the right of Ball Road, stay on Danville, and it's just, it's not on the corner, it's the next house, you'll see it.
Is this the guy that has all that military stuff?
Yeah, that's the guy, got him, got him. So, yeah, take a beat down, and maybe in the interim, we send it to council and just get an opinion from them.
I think we should go to council.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
So, are you continuing this to the next meeting in June?
Yes. We've got three on the agenda, but yeah, we, we need to, we can't hold them up, so. We have four on the agenda now? Okay.
I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
I don't either. Okay. So, we need a motion to refer to council?
I'll make a motion to refer the proposal to council and continue this hearing to, what is that, June?
Three plus...
Seventeen?
Yes, three plus fourteen is seventeen.
At six forty-five. We have a second.
Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? That means we're going to send it to our legal counsel, and they're going to interpret that sentence for us.
Maybe.
Maybe. Well, we're going to ask them, we're going to, we ask, put the request forward that they interpret that sentence for us, and find out what they say, and as soon as we get that back, we'll get in touch with you, and we've got this continued into our next meeting, so you can come back and unfortunately extend the decision maybe, but unfortunately, it's a two-week delay.
So, the council is going to interpret that? And where's the council attorney?
Town council? Who's our town council now?
It's Drummond, Winston Drummond in Manchester, that's the firm that we use.
Oh, so it's not...
No, it's not anyone local, no.
Actual attorney.
And at the same time, take a ride. You'd like a ride?
I'm sure, I just wish I, I wish I...
Yeah, I know, I, I understand that, I do.
We're saving thousands of dollars.
Unfortunately, it doesn't get discussed till you get here with it, and that's the only time we can actually discuss and make a decision. Okay? All right? Good night. Thank you, good night.
The third hearing of the evening is Blue Stone Investment Group, LLC. We're talking about four, eleven, and thirteen Marshall Grove. Tax map R thirty-three, lot twenty-one, and map R forty-one, lots fifteen, eleven Marshall Road, and lot fourteen, thirteen Marshall Road. It's in the rural residential Africa district, it's seventeen point nine three acres, and C two, so the first lot is in rural residential with seventeen point nine three acres, the second lots are in C two with one point six and one point six nine acres. The intent of this review is to receive the board's comments and input regarding the proposed age-restricted market rate project consisting of a single-family, of single-family housing units with a building separation of no less than twenty-five feet on a property less than the required twenty acres. This concept includes the development of map forty-one lots fourteen and fifteen under the age-restricted rate zoning, which are located in the C two district, and this is a design review application, so they're coming forward to get our feedback, and no decisions, no final decisions will be made this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Barry Geyer, I'm with Jones Beach Engineers for the applicant. With me is Alex Molstero, who's with the development group. As you said, this is map thirty-three, lot twenty-one, which has seventeen point nine three acres in the rural residential zone, and map R forty-one, lots fourteen and fifteen, that have one point three three acres in the C two zone. The intent of this project is to construct a market rate, age-restricted development consisting of single-family homes. We brought this project before the board in April to get the board's input on the proposed development. Specifically, we talked about the, going from the multi-unit buildings to single-family homes, as well as the twenty-five-foot separation, building separation. So, we took the board's input as positive at that time and submitted to the ZBA for the variances to allow the market rate age-restricted on a parcel with less than twenty acres, as well as to allow a building separation of twenty-five feet, as opposed to the required forty feet. It was then determined that since the ordinance, this project is allowed under as an innovative land use ordinance, the appropriate board for which to obtain relief is the planning board, so we're back, which brings us back here tonight. So, we're hoping to get the board's input on a few items prior to completing all the engineering required to submit a formal site plan package. So, the project consists of twenty-six single-family residential units on the larger lot, which is R thirty-three, lot twenty-one, and we are hoping to include four single-family units on map R forty-one, lots fourteen and fifteen, which are directly across the street and in the same development group ownership that they have been for quite a while. All units are to be serviced by a community water system and septic system, and some units have shared driveways. Lot twenty-one has seventeen point nine three acres, of which sixteen point nine are upland. Lots fourteen and fifteen have a combined one point three three acres, all of which are upland, which gives us a total of eighteen point two, three acres of upland. The allowable density is four bedrooms per acre, which equates to seventy-two, seventy-three bedrooms, or thirty-six three-bedroom homes. The proposed development is thirty two-bedroom homes. So, that's the project in a nutshell. As I said, we're hoping to get input from the board on specific items that would drastically alter the project prior to spending the resources to complete the full design. Number one is the size of the lot. Per Article two oh eight, section two oh eight, five, B one B, the market rate age-restricted projects are limited parcels over twenty acres, but there is no limit to the, or there is no minimum upland required for that. Therefore, it, it would, it would be allowed by right to do this on a twenty-acre parcel that only had five acres of upland. So, we believe it is appropriate for the, for this project, for these parcels that together contain over eighteen acres of upland, so we'd like the board's input on that, as well as the, the second thing would be the building separation. Per Article two oh eight, section two oh eight, five, C one, the minimum separation between the buildings is forty feet. We are proposing a building separation of twenty-five feet, which is the same as required of multifamily in the C one district. We did review this with the fire chief, who had no objections regarding that. The third thing is the inclusion of lots fourteen and fifteen into the project, and I'm going to let Alex go through our thinking on that.
Thank you. Yes, when we were here at the previous meeting, and we had shown you guys some aerials and things like that, but we had the pleasure of hearing the bearing, sorry, what town am I in? The Kingston Library talk about the trails that they have planned and the stations that they have planned out there, and hearing that vision, we really felt that having these two parcels across the street and combining them in the development scheme for the larger parcel made sense to have them connected, to have those two parcels be able to cross the street and access the trail network that could then access over to the library and all of the investment that the town is making over there, and the community water system that's going to be going in could service those lots as well. So, in looking at that whole scheme of development, it made sense for a cohesive neighborhood that we include those two lots across the street as sort of an additional phase of this fifty-five-plus neighborhood, to create a community feel as you approach the, the site. So, we wanted to get initial feedback on, on that thinking, and if the planning board thought that was good planning, we would move forward in that direction before, when we go to full design.
Okay. What?
I, my concern is that you're in a different zoning ordinance, I mean, different zoning district that doesn't allow residential, although you're dealing with that issue for another parcel in the same district. So, I assume the ZBA is going to give you a sort of guidance in that, in that direction. As far as having four additional units across the street, I don't really think it makes any difference at all. It's, you own the land, you're in close proximity, you can do the streets to align properly, you know, no, no harm, no foul, really. It's just, it's a zoning issue. And my perspective on the eighteen acres, we went forward with a plan that had been granted a variance, saying that eighteen acres was appropriate. So, if the attorney is right in her perspective on this being a planning board decision now, it seems to me that it's still a legitimate use of the land at eighteen acres as if it were twenty. And that's not, that's not a planning board member speaking, that's me speaking. I, I don't see how, I don't see how you remove the logic simply because you're changing the board that gets to make the decision.
Yeah, obviously, we agree.
So, I, I don't, I don't see an issue there. The board, and on the, the, the third issue, the board typically looks to the fire department for building spatial, building spacing issues, and are these going to be sprinkled?
Most likely not.
Most likely not, so that, we're, we're going to want feedback from the fire department.
Yeah, we did meet with the fire department before we ever started this process, and they didn't have an issue with it. We did point out that multifamily separation, building separation in the C one district is twenty-five feet in town as well, so there's no problem with it in one district... So if there's no problem with it in one district, why would there be a problem with it in this district?
Yeah, so I, the board, that's, that's typically who the board turns to, so I would expect it would also happen here.
Can you do lot merges with lots across the street from each other?
Well, they're, you're only proposing to merge fourteen and fifteen, correct?
Correct.
You're not proposing to then merge that merged lot with the one across the street.
Correct, we're not.
And I'm asking if that's possible.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you could merge it with the lots across the street if they wanted to.
I believe per the RSA, the street creates a legal lot line, so they could not.
It creates a law line, okay, so you couldn't. Okay, just, just asking.
But I mean, the larger, the merger process for them for lots fourteen and fifteen is.
Oh, that's no, that's no issue. But I was just wondering if they could merge them with the ones across the street, that's all. So obviously, we'd have to deny it because it's not permitted in C2. So you'd have to go to the zoning board of adjustment for that.
Correct.
Yeah, and so that's why we wanted to come here preliminarily tonight and just hear feedback on if, you know, if we went to the zoning board after this meeting and got their approval to put these four units in the C2 zone, is that something that the planning board could support and thinks makes sense as part of this project? Along with the twenty-five foot unit separation and the parent parcel size being lower? So that then we can go into a full design and come back to you with a, with a really complete product. And as you know, this, this site was previously approved, so the smaller lot size for the parent parcel has already been vetted by the ZBA and then approved by this planning board as a result. We're just changing the type of development to the single-family detached.
So the density of four residences on one point three acres isn't an issue?
Nope.
Okay.
Cause they're using our age restricted formulas.
Okay.
That determine it on bedrooms and outfits.
Do you need a motion? Yeah.
Do you have a public comment?
Yeah. Yeah, we do have a public here, yeah. The kind of motion that Ellen's gonna make, we do. So, do we have any public comment?
Everyone gazes in your direction.
All right. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Back to planning board. So.
Does it need to be age restricted? I'm sorry?
Yeah, it does for the density.
Do we change that some day, please?
Maybe, maybe they could drop the ages down to thirty-five and.
And I would love to see three bedrooms, single-family, I'm sorry.
Did you, we made clear this was a design review?
Yes. But I think the motion is going to be, oh no, so we can't deny it because it's a design review, so we can't make any.
Correct.
What we would love is like a straw, we know nothing is binding here tonight, but we would love just like a straw vote, yes, we, you think you should move into full design with twenty-five foot unit separation and the parent parcel being less than twenty acres, you know, yes or no?
Just poll the board, just poll the board, yes or no.
And same thing with the four units across the street, yes, we think this makes sense or no, we don't. And that'll help us just give a direction on, on where we go.
So we'll start to my left, Paul? Rob?
Yes.
And Rob's? Yes, so yeah, it's a good move.
Okay. All right, my question to you would be, how can you go to the ZBA without a denial? Can you go to the ZBA without a denial?
We can, yes, yeah, we can go preemptively and ask for relief from the zoning that exists today in order to come back, yeah, no problem.
We technically.
Or, I believe the planning board can direct us to go to the ZBA, right?
Oh, then I think we should do that.
Do we have a motion to direct them to go to the ZBA?
I move that we direct Blue Stone Investment Group to go to the ZBA to apply for the variance required for the lots in C2.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
There you go, thank you very much. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
You were very patient.
So Glenn, you'll write the letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you much. Okay, we get down to board business. Okay, so the first thing we have is a release, a request to release the escrow from Betavento Batuminus Products LLC. What was it, four?
Do we know how much that was for?
Oh, yeah, for the building they did, that's right.
So it's probably, we probably reduced it to twenty-five hundred or something?
I have on the bottom hundred.
Three thousand?
Two thousand.
Was that the original or is that the balance?
That's the original, we don't know the balance.
There's nothing more outstanding than that.
Has anybody been over to inspect it, do we know it?
My understanding from Pedro, my understanding from Pedro is that he has, um, he's fine with the project is completed, so he's, he's signed up on it, but we can verify that.
Okay, and Dennis felt that it wasn't something he needed to look at.
It's a building over just a, over a surface, so.
Exactly.
And if I haven't done any cost against it, it's, I'll do that and it will be minimal.
Okay.
Because there just wasn't a lot of review involved.
So let's double check on the costs and if.
If you just do a motion.
Yeah.
Understanding here, if there are fees, we'll pay them.
So as soon as you guys get verification, I'll sign up.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, yeah, we need a motion. What, go ahead, Rob.
Can we just say that it's approved minus any professional.
Outstanding.
Yes, yes.
We all decide now.
And yes, I should just verify with.
There you go, or I'll just do it in action.
Number one. Number two is another escrow release, and that is for All American Assisted Living, AKA Senior Housing Development LLC.
And this is a big escrow release, right?
Um, can, we usually do a motion on this, can we do a motion or is it just?
Okay.
They need a motion.
Do we have a saggation?
Saggia.
Marken? So this was, we don't have a number down here, Rob?
We do not, because that's very old. So the situation with that one is, is we would have to verify the amount of escrow. And then we have to talk with Dennis on the bond situation, and do we need Dennis to go over and look at All American?
So Dennis? Give me something. Go ahead, Dennis.
What I was involved with was just a bond and looking at the site work. The drainage, detention basins, the landscaping, the number of trees that were supposed to be planted, some of them had died as I remember, and some of them had to be replaced. And the grass, there was areas that the grass hadn't been grown, wasn't growing when I did an inspection. This was a number of years ago. And right now, of course, it's had plenty of time to, to be well vegetated and I would assume everything is okay. I haven't, I'm very live, but I haven't really looked at it closely. But the bond that I had was for drainage pipes, manholes, catch basins, hydro seeding and mulch. And there was a bond release and the, out of seventy-five thousand dollars, there was six thousand two hundred and six dollars left. And that was primarily for some fine grading and some hydro seeding and mulch and fertilizer. So I would assume that's all been done, but I don't know, but this, I have only sixty-two hundred dollars basically on this. This bond release.
Like, it does have the amount, it's sixty thousand, you know, but this is just a definite portion of that?
Right, I think the, the big amount was for Dana Treslow's bio area for the nitrate setback system. And there was, there was quite a discussion about that, I just didn't have that.
The ongoing testing for that.
There was ongoing monitoring.
And there is ongoing monitoring, so some of that probably needs to stay in the, we need to keep some of it for continued monitoring, so should, so perhaps, we should.
I need to, I need to reach out to that.
So if you reach out to her and then we'll bring this back in the next meeting, we have some real numbers of what needs to be.
The escrow.
Yeah, the escrow.
Yeah, I, I would say we still can't even release that six thousand until you run a block.
Up to you, I mean, I think it's necessary to run a block, it's been a number of years, so.
I would go back out and take a look.
Took care of it, didn't it?
And then you charge the cost of that inspection and then we'll come off that at the.
That's kind of like a final.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
What's the actions there, you're gonna turn with?
With Dennis. And Dennis is gonna do an inspection.
What the term of, now in the inquiry, where we should go.
Okay.
Perfect.
So we have a, with the escrow, we're gonna hold on the escrow until.
I guess.
No, probably, but project for not. Because we have a whole partner, we have money set aside.
So the escrow to pay for.
Yes, yes.
Just trying to get.
Yes.
We have a building civil construction management to receive email and plans and application documents, law review, draft report. Email to town and applicant. And that is for the, on the board's site plan and here to review. Five hundred and ten dollars. Can we do that?
Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the basic meeting? Wait a second. Discussion errors or missions, seeing none, all is in favor? Capital improvement program, we have an update?
Everything went out, department heads everything, everything for the request, I think from June nineteenth or something for them to get materials back to me. Sometime around that June nineteenth, they'll set up a meeting. I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring the committee together until we have the responses, so. See, not even one has come back yet, so I'm, I'm assuming I'm gonna get a trickle activate if that would be selected, so. When that happens, we'll set up that first meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. The next thing is the master plan RFP, we've had it for a month now, everybody's had a chance to look at it, does anyone have any comments on it? I know I gave one directly to Glenn.
Yeah, and I'm gonna make those changes. She gave them to me yesterday, so I will make those changes. If anyone had any that they wanted to give me, I would really like to do this by Thursday.
Noted, I'll send them to you.
Yeah, so basically, it was a change of the date because we have the, the date to have all the bids come in by June fifth, so that is the work.
Can I just?
There was a typo and there were just a couple of other things that I thought should be in different portions of it and a couple of things that I thought should be clarified, but other than that, it's good.
So I do have a, I, my comment is really just a question about whether or not there should be language included about, like, debriefing opportunities with folks who were not issued contracts.
No. Why are you so kind?
I don't know, that's.
We make a, we make a cold-hearted decision and then that's just where it is.
So I, you have the other RFP, you, you, there's language in there.
Well, I was, I, I think, this is a huge RFP. Don't the selectmen want to send it to council?
It will.
I, I would, I would think so, before we send it out, we're gonna wanna have council look at it.
Council will put in the language to protect the town from suits.
Right, and to make sure that what we're requesting is, doesn't cause them any heartburn.
Correct.
So.
Unnecessarily.
So honestly, I, I need those comments by Thursday, so I can then give it to Susan, so she can put it on these guys' agenda.
Correct.
For your next meeting.
Yes.
It, it has to go.
We gotta get it out quick.
Yeah, it, it, it has to go. It's the biggest RFP we will do for the next ten years, so we can't screw it up.
So, um, if you have any comments, give it to Glenn and.
By Thursday.
Should we have a vote to say it's fine when that's decided? Or do we need a vote and we just be consensus, consensus?
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's everything on this list. Rob, I think you just left it in the folder.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. Do we have any other business that may, we can come forward? Yes, sir.
Very sorry. The cell tower has not provided us a plan that, that the registry will accept. And their council is now asking that we just, as our closing point on that, just record our notice of decision. Now, our conditional use approval, I mean, our conditional approval said they would provide us a recordable instrument, and they have not. And we are far beyond the deadline for that approve, for that conditional approval, which lapsed back in December. And I'm, I'm uncomfortable just saying, yeah, for this one, we're just gonna say it's okay to do the notice of decision unless we open up the process and say, and change our, change our conditions of approval. I think that's the only avenue we can offer them. They're not gonna be happy about it, but it's better than us just saying your project has lapsed.
And we're setting a precedent if we don't draw the line in the sand now.
Exactly.
Quite honestly, and, and we could send them a letter saying, your, your, your permit has lapsed. If you want us to negate it, please record the deed accordingly, within sixty days or thirty days or whatever.
Why won't they record it?
I'm sorry?
Why won't they record it?
Because it's, it's not a survey plan, the registry doesn't wanna record site plans.
Oh, okay.
Because there's no space. That's the stupidest excuse I've ever taken in my life. That's their, there's a law, there's a state law for planning boards. We cannot revoke an approval if that plan wasn't recorded at the registry. So she's making a decision, the registrar is making a decision that she's not going to record site plans unless they're just survey property plans. And that, if she doesn't do that, we can't follow state law that says we can't revoke a site plan that's no longer in play because we can't even get them recorded at the registry.
We gotta go up the food chain, that, this is an executive council decision. I think you should contact Janet Stevens and, and let her know where the situation is.
Say what the.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
That's, that's an intra, I love that, I love that idea. But what's gonna come from this is I'm gonna say, the board is not comfortable just recording the notice.
That's correct. Exactly.
Perfect, thank you for your time.
Yeah, there's one question, assessing loans to reassess this property, now it is gonna have to qualify for modern use. Are they gonna, they're gonna need to record a site plan or something.
They're gonna need something.
To base it off, they just can't put it in there. Just wanna make sure. And that's another reason you need something, right?
Yeah. I mean, they, they said they could do it, they just don't want it to, because it's additional cost.
That's not our problem.
It's not our problem.
Because God knows Conker sends many require, requests to us without funding that backs it up. So let's shoot it back up there.
Exactly.
Just say it. Okay.
I hear ya.
I'm waiting out in the minutes. Not a problem. Is there any other business to come before the fourth? All right, Rob, and what do we have for our next meeting?
A ton.
Yeah.
You, I understand now we have four coming in front of us.
So we have a site plan at 111.
111 Main Street, which is a site plan where they wanna take apartments and make them condos.
Yep, um, we have a ADU, they want to take the office building across the street at 152 and turn that into ADU.
Okay.
Golden Acres. What does Golden Acres wanna do?
They're, they're submitting their, their site plan for all the.
To expand on the island that they've already expanded on, okay.
And then, um, they continued for sixty mil and then continued for eighty.
Let's make sure Dennis gets a good look at that island.
So, nothing there is a project revision.
Let's, let's take a vote, does anyone believe that any of those, can we have? Does anyone believe that any of those, can we have motion that they're not of regional impact?
Those are regional impact.
Okay. Second. That takes care of that.
It does.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
It does, thank you for that.
Okay. Anything else? So, we have those coming up at the next meeting, and other than that, we should, we'll have the, maybe at that point have the RFP through council and back.
Hopefully. I can't imagine she will spend very much time on that.
Hopefully get it back and get that out, so that would be the goal for that. Anything else? Peter, anything? Okay.
Just hanging out?
Yes.
We missed your turn.
Meeting is adjourned.
I think that he does. I think he will.